...order, say October 11th, 2011. And our first order of business this evening is to honor our former committee member and chairperson, Bob, if you would come up.
Where you get some years, I want to play, you all play vice chairman some time.
Hi now.
So on behalf of the First Year Original School Committee, I'd like to honor you with this plaque, acknowledging your service from 2002 to 2011. Thank you so much. I think you represented us very well as chairman several times at graduation, first day of school without us around you, but also as chairperson at meetings. It certainly is a wonderful representative plaque.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I'm just gonna miss, I'm just gonna miss everybody. I really enjoy it over here. Even though Lauren graduated last year, my last little sibling goes off to college. But I figure a lot of these kids are like my sons and daughters anyway. But you know, Matt showed, wanted to do it a couple of years ago, and I begged him a couple of years ago that I would stay on, and then he did state auditor, tried to run for state auditor last year, and he asked me if I would, you know, do it another year here. Worked out really well, right? Yeah. But it was, it was, it was time for me to step down and let Matt come over. He has a lot of good, a lot of ideas to help the committee and help their school over here. So, but thank you very much.
Don't go away. I think probably some of the rest of us would like to say something. I'm a big store. And I just want to say, on the pleasure of being a terrific board member or chair, and I appreciate the opportunities we've had to work together. And one thing that I would single out is you are on the school committee for all of the children, all of the students. You represent well, and you were a good advocate for the board. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna come up and talk to you, Bob. Because one of the things that I could always count on Bob was he would always tell it like a buzz. And even if I disagreed with him, I knew I had his honest opinion. And I also have to let you know that he was the inspiration for our talent show. And I don't know if you haven't seen that wonderful rendition we did with the frontettes. Well, the first part of the show is we came in throwing lollipops. And, and I got that inspiration from you because you were always out there with the kids, trying to spur them on. And I think the students always counted you as a friend and somebody that they could go to. So we'll miss you for that, but we'd certainly wish you well.
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks.
I wanted to thank Bob as well. Bob has been both on Whitley and Frontier, real man of the people. And as Regina has mentioned, always has the first interest of the children at heart. And is, is always at the forefront in his mind on there. He's represented Whitley extremely well, both here and in Whitley and on the negotiation committee in any number of ways. Bob will be the first one to think about how we can improve the playground or how we can make the kids' day better. And so we're, we're much better for it.
Thank you very much. We're gonna hold off on the rest of the roast until we get you. Not gonna publish. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're going to have a brief recess and enjoy refreshments in honor of Bob's serving this committee. We can convene in ten minutes or so.
We have apple pie and less cookies and hot coffee, so I'll be happy to serve people pie if you wanna come on over.
I guess both of you guys did a presentation today. Or like, I guess you presented a presentation.
Definitely.
Both of you said that they say basically too much. Basically. This is what we do. You know, those are filler words. That's their filler word of choice. It's not like basically.
All right, we will reconvene the meeting at 7:18 PM. And move on to review and approve the minutes until September 13. In your packet.
We had technical difficulties this way. They were hand carried.
Oh, they're not.
No, they were there after.
They're hand carried. They're on the table. And after you have a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry to make.
In a second. Second, a motion in a second. Any questions, additions, corrections? Not all those in favor? And are you doing the financial statement?
I am doing the financial statement. It is before you this evening. We really don't have any overdues. We have a, I guess one line item is $2 over the posted was a little too much. But we really are in good shape. And as we begin this year, this is month four. As we go through our group. Have any questions? I can have to try to answer them.
Questions? All right. Public comment? You're now the public. Would you like to comment?
I think my comments.
All right, we'll be by mentor reports, report from the principal.
Okay. Do you have report in front of you? I've also included the latest copy of the Red Hawk Report. And I included Library and Media Center news report. But I'll start with open house. I thought it was fairly successful. It was coupled with a basketball, or a girls volleyball game. And so I know there was limited parking. But it kind of added to the festivities because of the nature of the game was to try to raise money for breast cancer awareness. And we did follow the formal presentations for the high schools. Second year we've done that. And feedback that I've received was that parents seemed to like it. I'd also like to just publicly thank Eddie Doyle here in Atherton, Heather Barton, Kathy Scott, and them to say that they're the ones who are instrumental in organizing Rachel's Challenge that was here last week. We had two assemblies on October 4th for middle school and high school. And then we had a training session where over 140 high school students were trained. I know Jacob's gonna talk a little bit more about that. In the evening, I was kind of holding my breath. I was hoping we'd be half 20 or 25, but there were well over 200 parents that night. Community members. So we were quite pleased with that participation. And the next step always, of course, is to try to maintain the momentum. We had a meeting after school today with students and faculty. And so we have some plans to put in place. Along with the more detailed library report, I'd just like to give you some stats at the end of the year because this is a very busy place. During the last school year, we had a total of 36,015 student visits to the Library and Media Center. 18,839 occurred during the second semester. This is an increase of about 6,000 students. We had 30,734 visits last year. This is compiled by classroom teachers who sign up for the space and the number of students using resources. And also, just if you're, you know, wondering if anybody comes here after school. Last year, we had 3,140 students who visited the library after school. And on Saturday, we had 16 students arriving from the Netherlands. This is our exchange program. We had a small reception in the cafeteria where people met their host families. And students are attending classes. They were here today. They've got a bunch of field trips coming up. They'll return home on the 21st. This is the third year for this program. I know some very tight bonds have been developed between students who've had, students visit them, and then in turn have gone over there. So we're really happy to have that. And spring, Earth Spring. Fall Spirit Week will take place October 24th through the 28th. We're once again hoping to reinstate a parade during halftime. We tried it about eight, nine years ago. And we're hoping to have more student involvement. On the, if you turn it over, I just wanted to point out to you too that sometimes we don't talk about this. But as part of our teacher evaluation process, last year, you may recall that Darius, Sarah, and I divided up the faculty of 72 people, split it as equitably as possible. And our goal is, and we were, we were pretty good at meeting the goals, to have 10 to 12 visits per teacher per year. Now, there are four cycles in the evaluation process. And at any given time, you don't have, you know, the full group going through cycle one, which is the comprehensive eval. But each of us has between six and eight teachers who go through the comprehensive evaluation. And I just have some upcoming dates for you to take, you know, just to mark your calendar. You can take a look at those. When you take a look at the report, that was the library use report. One of the things that Rochelle did is to not only just give you some more numbers to take a look at usage, but she also put in some statistics on the second page about the revamped summer reading program. I had told you about that last month. And again, it was well received. She had 80% of the students reported enjoying the group activities that they did. Almost 60% liked the choices. 76% liked the book that they chose to read. So the purpose, of course, of summer reading is to get kids reading and to get them talking about it and to get them talking about it with their teachers and to get excitement reading. And I think we've achieved that. And it's really, the success has been instrumental because of Rochelle. So that's what I have. If you have any questions. Oh, the only other thing I wanted to report to you. The Red Hawk Report, which comes out fairly regularly. Mr. Tadana, who's the advisor, decided this year to take a little bit different slant. Rather than trying to do timely news reports, which frankly, by the time they come out are no longer timely. What he's doing is having the kids do more in-depth research on interesting topics. And I think it's a good way to go. And it allows the kids to really improve their writing through draft and rewrites and draft. Any questions?
Thank you, Marty.
Okay.
And welcome, Jacob Henry, as our student advisory council. You have a report for us?
Yes. As Mrs. Bear here was mentioning about Rachel's Challenge, student council was very involved with that. The main goal of Rachel's Challenge was to promote kindness to the school. And as part of Rachel's Challenge, not just the assembly in the school, after the assembly during lunch, it went on for two days. Everyone in the school had a chance to sign a hand with a message or name, anything you wanted to put on it. And I don't know if any of you guys noticed, but when you walked in, they're all lining the halls. And along with that was a banner that we all got to sign. And you wrote your name under it. You accepted the challenge. And I don't, I don't know where that's hanging.
It's somewhere.
It's somewhere with all the hands. As, as student council, we discussed it, we thought the program was really powerful. It really, not only did it try to promote kindness, but it lets you know exactly what happened on the day of Columbine. Because that's what the main thing was about, is about a girl who was killed during Columbine. And me personally, I hope to see it as a change to our school. But along with Rachel's Challenge, student council's also been trying to bring in locally grown foods, fruits and vegetables to the school cafeteria for lunches. I know Olivia Bronis' dad had a lot to do with that last year. And we're gonna try to promote that again this year. We also have a Renaissance program in our school. And they promote MVP students in our school. It's trying to have teachers nominate kids that they think were showing acts of kindness, you know, holding a door for somebody they didn't need to hold, you know, someone that's walking behind them. Just trying to do something out of their way to help other people. And I know last year, we had a few of them. Normally, we're ready to walk in the doors to the left in those glass cabinets. That's where their pictures get put up. But we're gonna try to do that again this year. Right now, it's all there. Any questions?
Thank you.
I would just comment that I was very impressed with the student council in terms of bringing Rachel's Challenge here. I did go that evening, and I was amazed at the number of students who had sat through it during the day and had brought back their parents that evening. I thought that was very encouraging. Really says quite a bit about the student body here in Frontier.
Yeah, I know a few years ago, my brother was trying to get this here. And for it to finally come was definitely, it shows that it was working. It was work in the making.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing the follow-up reports from that. Questions? Unfinished business. Policy, the ALC management policy.
Yes. This is the policy presented at the last school committee meeting. That encompasses all ALCs in terms of the work that we've done to implement plans to keep students safe regardless of the ALCs they may have here in Frontier. If you have any particular questions, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, we are looking for approval of this policy.
Questions? entertain a motion?
We'll move to approve the policy. Second? It's all seconded?
Motion in a second. Are you no questions? All those in favor?
Now again, we'd just like to recognize the work of the subcommittee. So Judy, Cecilia, and you did a great job with that policy.
This is, we have zero info here. Our MCAS results, they are. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be here. I pass out to all of you a stapled three-sheet document that covers some of our MCAS results for this year. For those of you who have been around all the elementary or have been on the elementary school committees, this will look very familiar. Louise and I try to coordinate what we're giving to all of you as far as information. For years, I've been coming here. I've been doing PowerPoint presentations. I've been handing out handouts. And I've been showing you the chart that's at the bottom. And every year, I say, and we're way above this because in our English performance, we're in the 90s. And in our math performance, we're usually high 70s or 80 on our CPI. And I said, eventually, this line will catch up with us. We're a high-performing school, but eventually, we are gonna be at a point where we're not, no longer making AYP. And last year, we hit that point where we didn't make AYP because the, the bar has been set so high. The original goal of NCLB was that all students in the country would be proficient or higher by 2014. So if we think about that as a goal, originally, when they set and motioned the goal, we all, as educators, knew that that probably wasn't very reasonable to expect that every child in the United States was going to be proficient by 2014. Some of the states in the country, like California, knew that the law would go away eventually, especially as we got closer to 2014. And so they set very, very small increments that students would have to attain in order to be considered a high-performing school. So they started out with 2% a year. And three years ago, they all of a sudden, schools in California had to make 14 or 15%, 15% gains in their performance. As you can see in Massachusetts by this graph, Massachusetts is a little bit more reasonable. At least the goals looked obtainable as you examine the graph. But still, the reality is looming that 2014 is just a couple of years away. As a result of this, 91% of the districts in Massachusetts are no longer making adequate yearly progress. And we are one of those districts. It's just, it's just math. I mean, it's just a waste of district fall. At the top, you can see all of our four elementary schools and Frontier and our actual performance rating. And that's rated on how are we doing as a school in general, based on our CPI score. So you can see in ELA, our scores are still very high. And in math, we fluctuate between moderate and high performance on the math assessment. So if you flip the page, this is a data sheet that is presented on the website. And if you look under the performance column, you can see our actual performance for English Language Arts. And so our overall score for English Language Arts is 92.6, which is very high. Our math was a little bit lower this year. It was 76.8. But it's still a very acceptable score. And then if you look down at the bottom, you can see our adequate yearly progress history. So it tells whether we've made it in, in general, and also for subgroups. And most districts, that tends to be where districts are falling short, is the subgroups, especially the special education subgroup as far as making, making that type of progress. So we did actually make our English Language Arts target overall, but not for our subgroups. If you turn the page, you'll see a general look at, the first couple of columns are proficient or higher. And there's just a couple of things I'd like to point out on this. We were very happy with our biology scores. We do offer two semesters of biology for freshman students. And you can see about three-quarters of the way down that line says Grade 10 Science and Technology Engineering. And 80% of our students were proficient or higher on that exam compared to 67% for the state. So it's not an easy exam if only 67% of the students in the state are proficient or higher. But we were very happy with that. And then in general, our 10th grade scores are very strong. Our middle school scores are not quite as strong. But students are progressing through their ninth and 10th grade year. And they are passing the MCAS during their, their Grade 10 examination. Does anyone have any specific questions about the information?
I think one of the things to point out is the fact that when we have out-of-district students, their scores are combined with our students in this building. In which obviously, we have no control over how they're taught or what they're taught. But they are our scores as well. So sometimes that does present a problem for us.
And in addition, we also have students that take an alternative assessment or portfolio assessment instead of the regular paper and pencil assessment. And those scores are also included in. And for those particular examinations, students can earn, the highest score they earned is, they could technically pass, but we don't tend to have students that would be passing the paper and pencil test taking a portfolio assessment. So it gets counted as a score that is not a passing score for, for Frontier. So sometimes those skew the numbers in a direction, depending on how many all assessments we have, depending on how many out-of-district placements we have.
So I, I guess I would just say that we're not happy with these scores. We do understand how we ended up with them. We are certainly, I think it's commendable that the students are doing a very good job in English Language Arts. We have middle school students across the state not doing well. And we have now a, because of the new core, a set, a core, common core that we're incorporating into our, particularly math, we do have a group of math people working in grades five through eight, which we think will be able to strengthen the math scores. But again, I mean to echo what Louise Law at the elementary level and Sarah Mitchell here in secondary keeps saying, that, you know, by 2014, we are not gonna have all of our students who are above average. Doesn't work that way. And I think that's why you see that the state is now going to be applying for a waiver, which the federal government is looking to grant states, which will move us away from the expectations of 2014. Because I think it was rather embarrassing in Massachusetts in particular because we do so well that we have 91 of our school districts not making AYP.
Question I had, there was something on the radio that some student picked up the fact that there was a grading area error.
Yeah.
And those been reflected in these statistics?
They have now, yes. This is, this is the latest information that they presented. It was very interesting, actually. I heard it on NPR, actually, on the way to work one day, that the Grade 10 math scores, there had been some kind of error that actually a student picked up, called their principal, and said, hey, I think there's something wrong with, with my math score. Because they actually went back and looked at the raw data and did the conversion, and it didn't come out correctly. So we actually counted, because we've gotten new reports for our Grade 10 for math, and we wondered whether it would make a difference with our scores. And it did. Most of, I'd say 80 to 90% of the students had an increase in their score by at least two points. Some of them, it bumped them from one level to the next level.
Yeah. I think the largest increase was a couple of students had a six-point difference and most had a two-point difference.
But they are reflected.
They are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can't say that they're skewed a little bit.
Right, right, right. And we've been, we've been reexamining because there are still actually a couple more reports that I want to pull to look at based on that information to look at where.
They're not gonna get any better unless the students get better.
Yeah.
Questions from Sarah?
The, the eighth grade science scores is, you know, most concerning. And I know this is, these scores are, you have a different class coming through every year. Is that a, is that way out of line historically with past eighth grade scores?
It's, it, this is a particularly low year. We had, we looked at the last, actually, six years because this one was so low to compare. And most of them, we hover around the state average or a little bit above the state average as far as numbers of students that are proficient in advanced. And for some reason, and we, we're going back and looking at the information. The eighth grade science, I'd say, is a particularly challenging assessment. We sometimes, in joking, it's a little bit like Trivial Pursuit. It's a very factual assessment. And if a teacher has covered a topic thoroughly, then students tend to do well on that particular group of questions. But because the, the width of the information is so wide, they are not gonna be able to cover each of those topics as in-depth as we would like, frankly. The way we have our science curriculum set up, we do physical science in sixth grade. We do life science in seventh grade, and we do earth science in eighth grade. And so the eighth grade science teacher does a review of all of those different topics before the assessment. And we've looked at this year after year and tried to modify what is being taught and what order it's being taught and how the review is being taken place. And it really just depends on how well the questions line up with what topics are being deeply emphasized at that grade level. Yeah.
Was there any one particular area of those three kind of categories that seemed to?
Physical science is always our weakest area. And I think that's because it's taught in sixth grade.
Yeah.
And there's revisiting in eighth grade for sure with earth science. Technology is always our strongest, even though there's not a lot of emphasis on technology. But the reason why it's the strongest is because our teachers teach a lot of logic, problem solving and logic solving. So you could be presented with a technology question, and you could figure out the answer because you're thinking through the process. Whereas a life science question, if they ask you a particular piece of DNA, you factually need to know that piece of DNA or else you're not gonna get that question correctly. So it relies a lot on memory and a lot of exposure to the topic.
Sure. And then lastly, I guess the aggregate math score showed a decline from last year. And, and you know, a single point in time is just that, a single point in time. Again, I'm sure there's fluctuations year to year. Do you see, going back historically, have we been showing any kind of trend one direction or other, not one year compared to the next year, but over a, you know, whatever it is, a six-year, seven-year average?
We usually, we're, again, in that area, we're usually slightly above the state average.
Right.
So again, this is a, this is a dip for this particular seventh and eighth grade class.
Sure.
So usually, we're either at or above the state average. And so we kind of dipped down this year. And I expect, based on past scores, that we're gonna see an increase next year.
Sure.
Just because of the waves coming through.
But I mean, regardless of being compared to the state or not, the actual CPI score, and again, that's a, that's a changing formula also as it goes along. So you really, you can't really do an apples-to-apples comparison. But do we seem to be staying at the 76 number or?
Pretty much staying, we stayed pretty much at the 80 number.
Sure.
2009, we bumped up to 85. And then we came right back down to 80.
Sure.
And this year, we bumped down to 76. And I imagine next year, we'll be back up at 80. So it's around 80, 81 is usually where we kind of hover as far as math performance.
It's also good to note that the CUT score changes each year. Because what happens is they do all the correction. Because what happens is they do all the corrections of all the tests, they have their scores, and then they decide where the cut's going to be. So it's a moving target. Because obviously, they don't want everyone to be failing.
Right.
So they have to figure it out.
Can I share that formula? Is it a curve or is it just a...
Well, they say it's not a curve, but if you look back at the statistical information deep into their reports, I can't find one of them that does not look like a bell curve.
Right.
I mean, some of them are skewed right, some of them are skewed left, but they all have that bell curve nature to them. Because it is very much, it's like Regina's saying, it is not normative data. And that's why we use other data sources in order to see how a particular student is doing, because it's norm reference. And Louise and I do a lot of manipulation with the data in order to try and make it more normative by comparing it to the state, by comparing it to other, comparing a single cohort of students as they come through to each other. And that's the way you can kind of correct for the fact that it's not normative, but it's very much a moving target.
I think the other thing to note is that the middle school tests are much more difficult than grade ten. And I'm sure that that's for a reason, because obviously, they don't want it to look as though grade ten students are doing more poorly than middle school students. So it's the middle school test that really is very difficult, and the secondary level, the tenth grade test is not as difficult.
True. And lastly, regardless of, you know, how we do against the state, and you know, I think, I believe that this isn't, it's difficult to glean out useful information, but what useful information for yourselves, regardless of trying to get the score better to meet MCAS, do you find anything useful in here just from an educational standpoint, a learning for the school?
We do. We look at the data each year. We make slight adjustments in curriculum based on these scores, because we are held accountable to the standards. And I think this assessment, although some of them are weaker than others, like the eighth grade science, they do provide information that we can feed back into the classroom loop and feed into curriculum. We use it with individual students on a very limited basis, because as you said, and everyone knows, it's one point in time. I mean, a student could come back from an illness and not be feeling well and not do well on a particular day, and there goes that assessment for them. But we do use it with a couple of other data points. So if a student's got weekend test scores, they've got weekend WA scores, their grades are weak, then we start to look at what can we do to help individual students with their performance overall.
The one that disturbs me, is of concern, is the eighth grade science and tech. Now, those kids haven't been tested in that prior, right?
They get tested in fifth grade. And the fifth grade examination tends to be a little bit more focused. It's a little less Trivial Pursuit-like, because the units that are covered can be covered as part of the fifth grade curriculum and then given a review. Whereas the science in eighth grade, it's a little bit wider, it's a little bit spread out.
But you've got sixty-two percent, if I read this right, need improvement. And that's almost two-thirds of your class.
Right, right. And this, and as I said, this is particularly low scores for this assessment. Usually, we hover around the state average. But even, one thing that's interesting to look at, that science, that eighth grade science, even though, I mean, we're low at twenty-seven percent being proficient and advanced, but the state as a whole is thirty-nine percent. So what that tells me as an educator is they really need to look at that assessment instrument in general. Because if only thirty-nine percent of the state is proficient or advanced, I would expect that number to at least, just statistically, be average at fifty percent, would be above and fifty percent below.
But the sixty-two percent really bugs me as to why.
Right. And then, don't worry, we've been asking that question, we're going back and looking at information and looking at data.
Now, do you have the test that they administer to you?
Well, that's another thing that's come up over the last couple of years. They used to give us all the questions, and we would go through item by item, look and say, oh, you know what, we taught this early in the year, and maybe if we shifted up a little bit closer to the examination, or if there was some kind of pattern, we could kind of tweak it. Now they're only releasing half the questions. So it is always the case that the question that you did most poorly on is a question that's not released. So you just kind of second guess why it could happen that way. Because sometimes it's purely the way the questions are written. Students just read them in a particular way. We understand why they read them that way, because they taught a unit a certain way. And so not having access to half the questions makes it challenging.
When these kids were in the fifth grade, they were tested, I know it wasn't as comprehensive, but was there anything at that point that would have put an alarm off?
No, the scores are stronger in fifth grade science, and they're stronger in high school science. So it's something about this particular instrument, this particular year, and the assessment that seems to be the most challenging. Because this is statewide, that this is problematic. Because we've also talked to other schools and other science teachers about, you know, we toyed for a while, you know, should we go to an integrated science approach? The students are getting all three of those topics every year. And we did some explorations with other schools that were teaching it that way. The scores were comparable, so it did not seem worth making a huge curriculum change for something that was so arbitrary.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Coalition of Teens Health Survey.
Sarah?
That would be my other, my colleague here. Each year, as those of you who know that were on the school committee last year and actually for the last ten years, every year, we ask permission to continue on with the Franklin County Coalition for Teens Health Survey. And the health survey rotates between three different surveys. And the survey provides us with information on drug and alcohol use, behaviors, adult relationships in the building, bullying, substance abuse, sexual activity. And so we use all of this information to inform programming that happens here in the school, and also to collect some data on trends that are happening. So I've just pulled out a few different pieces that seem to be the hallmark of the survey. It started out really as a drug and alcohol survey to find out what was happening in Franklin County. So what you see before you, just a single sheet page with the four graphs on it, are the Franklin County results. And as you can see, for all the trend lines in Franklin County, alcohol use, binge drinking, and binge drinking is considered five or more drinks in the single evening. Cigarette use and marijuana use are all trending down. Next to those numbers, because our school tends to be lower than Franklin County as far as these different areas, maybe with the exception this year of a couple of grades in marijuana use. But you can see for alcohol use, for example, in eighth grade, whereas Franklin County is fifty percent, Frontier is forty-one percent. So those are the comparative numbers that are next. So twelfth grade is the highest, tenth grade is the next line, and then eighth graders is the third line on that alcohol use. So you can see a forty-one, forty-one, and eleven for Frontier. Same with binge drinking. Our averages are below Franklin County. And the whole point of the health survey for Franklin County is they're really trying to do pro-social, positive behavior and modifications through advertising what's going well. So for example, in this particular survey, they talk about relationships with adults in the school building. And ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of students in our building report that they have a positive relationship with an adult in the building they feel like they can go and talk to. So the health survey committee will actually advertise that information. I'm sure you've seen billboards all over Franklin County with different statistics. There's also, this particular survey this year, they focused a lot on bullying. There were probably twenty questions on bullying, because all of the schools of Franklin County, as in Massachusetts, are trying to collect information about bullying and bullying prevention. We happen to do, we started an OVAIS program here at the school, which I think Marty or Darius has probably told you about in the past. And we've actually done a more comprehensive survey just having to do with bullying. So even though we use this information and kind of compare the two surveys, we really think collected all of that information before. So we find it's very valuable to keep on collecting this information year after year, because we can really watch the trends that are happening in the building and also determine whether some of the intervention programs, like health courses, are making some kind of difference in students' lives.
If I read the graph right, the forty-one percent of the kids are currently involved with alcohol in the twelfth grade and forty-one percent in the tenth grade?
Correct, correct.
Now, do we send a notice home to the parents just to, just to, you know...
Well, what, what the...
Sharing these types of statistics. We're not going to share the names or whatever, we just want you to know that there is a problem.
Well, and the way that this information would be presented with Franklin County is they'd say, they want to send a message that fifty-nine percent of kids have not had a drink in the last thirty days. And so by sending that kind of pro-social message that something is going right, that's the way they prefer to present the information, rather than saying forty-one percent. Now, that can mean, current alcohol use means they've had a drink within the last thirty days. That could be a religious event, that could be some kind of a social event in their family or household. So not all of it is kind of measuring going out and drinking, whereas the binge drinking measures more of that type of behavior that we're talking about, which is drinking, drinking to excess, really.
Are there any trends? I know most of this is showing trends in Franklin County. Do we notice any trends in, within our school?
We're actually following the same trend line. So even though we're starting lower, our trend line has been the same as far as decreasing in a lot of these different areas. And I think really, some of it has to do with these pro-social messages that they're sending out. Because kids sometimes, if you ask a question one way, they say, are you a person that would intervene in a bullying situation, for example? And ninety-six percent of the students in our school said, yes, I would intervene if I saw somebody that was being picked on. And then they ask the question, how do you feel other students feel about intervening in a bullying situation? And they'll say, I believe fifty percent of the students would intervene. So their perception of what they would do is different than what their perception of their friends would do. And that's why it's important to put out the message that, hey, you know, not everyone is doing it. And actually, you may feel that everyone is doing this, but really, they're not.
All right, Alexis?
It's interesting also that they, most of the effective, most effective programs seem to be working in alcohol and cigarettes, but mostly alcohol. And it does seem to be somewhat less effective, though there is a downward trend in marijuana use. Just to see why there might be, why there may be less success, though there's success, less success in that group as opposed to alcohol?
There's been more emphasis on alcohol, because I think alcohol is perceived as a larger, well, it is a larger issue in Franklin County. Because in Franklin County overall, our usage is higher than the national average. So there's been a lot of energy and a lot of focus on alcohol use. So I think there's much more of a campaign around alcohol use as opposed to marijuana use. So I think that may be part of the reason.
Other questions?
Thank you again. Thank you, Sarah. Executive session minutes are on the agenda, because this is the time of year where we address that, but we kept them. Right. There were no executive sessions held during the last year. So we have minutes to approve at this time. So we'll move on to super tech. Right. This month, I'm going through all of the school committees, and we're looking to put together a policy review committee. This came out of a discussion that we had in Conway a couple weeks ago, which we think joined us. And, you know, time goes quickly, and I really had forgotten the fact that the last time we looked at all of our policies was two thousand and three, two thousand and four. So a bit eight years, and I think it's time that we look again to see if any of our policies need updating, or if we need some new policies. So the way we're setting this up is that Darius has volunteered to head a committee, which would be a school committee person from each of the five school committees, working with Darius in the review of these policies. I have someone now from Wadley, I have someone from Deerfield, and I will be looking for someone from this school committee who will be willing to review policies. What, the people who are already on it have asked that we try to hold meetings as much as possible during the day or right at the end of school, that they really do not feel they could spend another night out. So I know that would interfere with some of you from serving on it, but not all of you. So I'm looking for a volunteer to work on this committee. The first meeting would be held in November, because it'll take me that long to get a committee together. And I think that we're going to make a start with a couple of the groupings of the policy. I'm guessing we probably have about three hundred. And we'll start with a couple, see how far we get this year. And this may be something that we'll follow through in next year as well, depending on how fast this program goes ahead. But it will be a lot easier this time around, because in two thousand and three and two thousand and four, we didn't have many policies that had been approved by school committees. And I know Marty and Janet Stellman in the central office, myself, we worked a lot with NESTC in getting these policies put together at that point. So I think it'll be an easier job this time around and not as tight as it is. So I'm looking for a volunteer.
Thank you. Great.
So Lynn Purcell. Everyone sign, we leave right now. And thank you very much. This one really doesn't pertain to you, but I want to follow up on this state testing MCAS. Massachusetts is now looking at testing kindergarten students. And I just want you to be aware of that. Now, we do our own individual assessment with kindergarten as well. And if indeed the state testing mirrors what we're doing, then obviously, we'll stop hours and go with mirrors. I have two concerns. Number one is how long and how involved is the testing the state wants to do with kindergartners? I have a real concern of that. And secondly, I'm always concerned because I guess I've seen too many unfunded mandates, and I've not seen anyone say, you're going to test kindergartners, and then when we find those who have needs, we're going to provide a little more money from the state to help with those students. I haven't heard that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, even though you're a secondary school committee, I think you should be aware of the fact that that is another movement that the state's looking to do. And I suspect that will come about. So we're just paying attention to that. And last but not least, I do have more law books with me this evening. So if indeed you still have not gotten a law book and you would like one, you see me after meeting, and I'd be happy to get you one. Have other questions? I'd like to be happy to reply.
I'd just like to ask a play on the change of the statute, trying to let daycare workers and demand drivers, et cetera, et cetera, form a union, which the teachers, you can just control, to mandate benefits and collective bargaining, which would probably ultimately have an impact on our contractors, et cetera, et cetera. So be aware of that.
Yes, for private, for private daycare programs. That's right, I had heard that.
And demand drivers, also. So, you know, that's the start of it. Then it'll be the fringe benefits, and the rest of it, just to be aware.
Questions, comments? Another portion of the future? And more papers?